And, and we just, it was, we're really hard pressed to, to get through, maybe we'd have one or two small capital projects in a, in a year. And, uh, and, and we've had a decade plus of lots of deferred maintenance. And so it's, it's really an exciting time to, to refresh the schools and, and do the things that, that frankly have to be done. They cost you more the longer you put them off, but, but you don't have any choice. And, uh, so, uh, so I appreciate you guys working with, uh, Mr. Gunner and, uh, sitting in on the capital planning committee and, and exciting to see, you know, multiple items come off from last year and, and more items fall into their place for, for another, uh, another pretty good year of, of making capital improvements. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank the committee. I, I was able to go to the first meeting, just observed, and it's always a great process. And I like how we, um, incorporate multiple stakeholders across the community. It's not just board members, it's not just staff, it's parents. And getting that feedback and that engagement, I think is very vital to the process. Of course, you know, we're required to do it, but I think it's still, even if we weren't required to do it, I, I know we would do it because it's a good exercise for us to, uh, assess where we are, assess our needs, and develop a plan to, to meet them, uh, realistically.
Anything else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Capital plan passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval bid number 2021-16 Chromebooks from VirtuCom to present the lowest responsible bid, meeting all specifications for a total cost of $479,400.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of bid number 2021-16. Can I have a motion and a second?
The error of the, um, it shouldn't be Chromebooks, it's the Windows devices for teachers.
Okay.
So that was just a, I saw there.
Okay.
But it's the correct company.
All right, so it's Windows, I'm sorry, so, um,
For our teacher devices.
Approval for bid 2021-16 for Windows.
Yes.
Laptops, uh, from VirtuCom, okay?
Sorry. Yes. I'm just looking at the table, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll be, uh, excellent, that lines up. So, uh, Board, the superintendent recommends approval bid 21, 2021-16, Windows laptop bid. All the, uh, can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Ms. Lesman. Dr. Nichols.
These are, um, continuing to, um, purchase for teachers. Now, as you, the board knows, we, um, are receiving the 7,200 that we used Esser funds for, for our students. There are another 1,200 for our employees, half of which are Windows laptops. Uh, so this is the bid. These are 15-inch displays, as you can see, Intel Core i5 16GB. Um, and, uh, so this comes from our technology department and recommendation for, uh, for these purchases.
Discussion, board? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend to present approval for the temporary exposure and sick leave procedure, uh, for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent presents a temporary exposure and sick leave procedure for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Ms. Lesman. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, these, uh, temporary through December, uh, procedures have been part of the system during, during, uh, the time that they were funded through the federal government for employees that had to be out. Uh, they allow them 10 days, uh, under certain specifications that are outlined in the temporary procedure order. Um, we feel like that at this time that, uh, that this is, um, a good effort on the district's part to work with our employees and, uh, to utilize, um, some of our funds in the cases where someone would need to exhaust those 10 days due to being, uh, positive or being a close contact or that kind of thing. Uh, they, this would temporarily run out December 31st of 2021, and at that time of the board, uh, if we felt like we needed to extend it, then we could come back to you and ask you to do that. Um, but at this time, we feel, uh, good about it exhausting itself, uh, at December the 31st. Dr. Ja, you worked on this, uh, any, any comments you'd like to share?
Questions, comments, board?
I have a question on the, um, close contact I. It says, fully vaccinated employees will not be excluded from board property. Employees will not be required to show proof of vaccination. Is that like, they, they show it voluntary?
Yeah, well, uh, the Attorney General has, has designated that, um,
We can't.
The bill that passed through the legislature, that, um, if someone doesn't want to share that, they can just tell us they don't want to share it, and that will suffice as, uh, that they have, um, received vaccination. And so we are following the opinion of the Attorney General on that word.
Okay.
And back on the definitions, just, Dr. Nichols, I know that's just earlier today, but I'm still a little confused. Clarifying, uh, three, the close contact. If they're within six, need a positive individual, but both individuals, let's say neither are vaccinated, but both are wearing masks, does the mask part matter?
Yes.
Is that an exclusion?
Under the ADPH, they would still fall in line with the standard that we are given in schools of wearing a mask and inside the three to six-foot distance. Yes, they would, they would not be required to, uh, to, to be excluded.
Okay.
This didn't go through policy, this is just something from the state that we just implemented, correct?
This is actually just a temporary, uh, procedure for us to use. We're not changing any of our leave policies. This is just temporary, um, in addressing, you know, we, here's an example. We have a, a teacher who, uh, is a close contact, or they have a family member that's been positive, and therefore they're a close contact. And this allows us to let them go home and work remotely and not penalize them their days. And so we're, it gives us latitude to work with them during this time. Um, so that's what it is, just, it, it allows us some temporary procedures.
Got it. Is it because it's temporary, doesn't go through the, or is it because of, so if, if I understand correct, where you're saying only if we were going to amend the policy book, that's when we convey to?
Yeah, we're just, we're just allowing, you're allowing me through this to work with them on a temporary basis as we deal with COVID and contacts and positive tests.
Yeah.
You established a policy last, a pretty strong party.
To the superintendent.
This is really a seizure under that policy. Not considering the policy, or the seizure implementing policy there.
Got it.
And brought you to here, okay? That's the, after the policy.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, we are in personnel actions.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of supplemental contracts for work performed for the school district as presented.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of supplemental contracts for work to be performed for the school district. Can we take these as a group?
Yes.
Seeing that it's groups, that a group is fine, can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of preliminary and advanced teacher excellence and accountability for mathematics and science contracts, uh, presented to you.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the team contracts before you. Can I have a motion, or can these be taken as a group?
Yes.
Can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, the board is aware of, uh, the team's contract passed by the Alabama Legislature. Uh, these folks will be added to that group. Some are new, and others, we had to get a waiver on certain classes that had not been identified in the original legislation by the state. Uh, once those were identified, then we could put them on this contract, and so they will be placed either on that, uh, contract according to the preliminary advance, uh, as they're, where they are in their teaching career, and also if they have a, uh, a, you know, certification or national award certification.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of list substitutes for Madison City School.
Dr. Nichols has recommended approval of the list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? Can I have a motion and a second?
Okay. No move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Ms. Lesman. Dr. Nichols, uh, we've approved a few of these, are these just as we, we continue to add substitutes in?
They will compile to the list that, uh, that Dr. Ja and her staff continue to grow.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else, board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of personnel actions as listed before you. Uh, you have extended leaves and catastrophic leaves, retirements, resignations, and other actions, um, processed by the Personnel Department.
Board, the superintendent recommends the personnel actions before you. Can these be taken as a group? Seeing that a group is fine, can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there any that you would like to recognize?
Yes, sir. First of all, two, uh, two retirees, um, is Stratton from, uh, from Bob Jones, Lois Stratton, who is retiring, a science teacher, biology and astronomy, and has served on, uh, the Alabama State Bob's Curriculum Committee. And, uh, her love for science and, and has been a passion, and, and we will miss her. And then Bridget Drummond, who has been at Bob Jones for 25 years in the Social Studies Department. Um, she actually did her student teaching with Kristi Finley, when Kristi was in the Social Studies Department, uh, where she served as a substitute. And then she has been a cheer coach and a peer helper and, uh, Patriot pantry, and she's done so many things for the school, and we will certainly miss her. And then, um, Mr. Dr. Scripture will be happy because we picked up some new bus drivers. So, um, he'll be one extremely happy transportation coordinator tonight, because he's been short of few people, and, um, most of our mechanics have been driving, and he actually served, uh, as an aide on the bus for several days. So I know that they'll be happy about that.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. That'll conclude personnel actions, and, uh, we'll move into the superintendent evaluation. And then, if you, you don't mind, Dr. Nichols, we'll do the evaluation portion, and then we'll roll into, uh, 2021, 2022 goals. Is that, is that fine? So, uh, I can do it from here, correct? My presentation. Is that okay with you, board, or do you want me to stand up front?
Let's think about that.
All right. Uh, as you know, uh, annually, as, uh, as a matter of practice, the board always evaluates the, uh, the superintendent. And, uh, Dr. Nichols had completed his first year with us in the May timeframe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so we then, each board member, uh, and the staff evaluated the superintendent and turned in, uh, superintendent evaluations. And then we compiled those, and we met individually with the superintendent to go through those results. And I sat in on the meetings of, uh, the other four board members in order to compile, uh, any notes and, uh, and, and be able to make this presentation. And so, uh, without any further ado, we'll go to, uh, it's a pretty short presentation. We'll go to the 2020, 2021 major accomplishments. Uh, it goes without saying that, uh, a very large one of those was that we opened Midtown Elementary, um, on time, before school, uh, by the skin of our teeth, but with supply chain shortages and, uh, and, and, uh, good construction management and a great, great contractor and, and your exceptional staff, who then was able to get, get that building moved in and, and ready for, uh, ready for the students. Uh, that was a major accomplishment. Obviously, it, uh, is a, a feather in our cap to finally move up from, uh, from number two to, uh, to number one, as the, as the best Alabama public school system in the state is ranked by niche. And all MCS schools were ranked in the top 20. I think we're really all ranked in like the top 17 or 16 or something like that, but, uh, but, but who's counting? But, so, uh, so, uh, obviously, it's a, it's a great accomplishment. Um, we were able to prioritize the use of the, uh, Esser funds and, and go after, as we, we've discussed a couple of times tonight, go after some, some really important things that needed to be done, that, that, uh, that as Dr. Nichols likes to say, you don't hang a plaque for a new AC system, but boy, those students and teachers sure do appreciate, uh, uh, working, working AC systems and, and being able to upgrade those. And we also prioritize the use of the, uh, one-to-one device initiative, and, and we're making progress towards that. Uh, really, the only thing holding us up on that has been, uh, has been supply chain issues. And otherwise, we would, we'd be there, or we'd be almost there. So, we'll move into strengths. The, the, uh, evaluation was a very strong one. Uh, not, not weighted at all under the, the pandemic. Uh, the, you know, Dr. Nichols hit the ground running. He knew the landscape was shifting before him, and it, it, he, he moved out unperturbed. Uh, his community relations, he was ranked as, as excellent. And, uh, and communication interpersonal relations, they, they followed right up behind that. Extremely strong as a CEO, being able to make decisions, being able to, uh, take input and, uh, and, and direct the, uh, the course of the district. And then his educational leadership was also very high. Areas to focus for next year are, uh, personnel management, recruiting, retention, different programs that, that, uh, that we need to, as a growing district, are paramount, especially in the timeframe we're in right now, where, where the, uh, the worker pool is, is just, is limited. And so, uh, that's, that's an obvious area, area for, for all, all businesses, all educational entities, and, uh, and all, obviously for our system. And, uh, behind that is pupil personnel services, uh, dealing with, uh, transportation and other issues, uh, is, is an area to focus on for this, this coming year. The average score on all sections is a 3.94 out of 5.0, with 5.0 being excellent. It's a extremely high, uh, total, average total, and we are, we were, uh, uh, obviously very pleased overall with the course that you directed this district to over the last year, and, uh, and your, your evaluation showed that. The last slide I have are, uh, the comments, and I just, and then there were, uh, there were a few pages of comments, but I just, I just picked out a few, and it's, "Dr. Nichols has a passion and a love for serving our students and affording the best opportunities for learning and success. Superb ability to run a school system with an executive-level approach. Dr. Nichols has done an outstanding job in his first year with Madison City Schools." And that he should continue open communications with other area districts, but always prioritize decision-making with a Madison, Madison-first mindset. Board, if you would like to, uh, to add any comments or anything, as, uh, as you are obviously integral to the superintendent evaluation process, please, please do so now. That was the end of my presentation to you, though, about each other's comments.
I just want to echo, I, I believe, you know, Dr. Nichols, as stated in your evaluation, you've done an outstanding job opening, building schools, prioritizing our funds, um, and then we've become number one public school in Alabama, all under a pandemic. Um, I, I commend your leadership and your ability to make decisions, the hard decisions. Um, you and your staff, we appreciate you, and I'm, I, I thought this evaluation was very good.
Anybody else?
Mm-hmm. So I would like to say that, that what I most appreciate when I talk to you and you talk to the board is you tell us what we need to hear, not what we want to hear. And that's great leadership, because the easy route, you got five bosses, and you can tell us what we want to hear to make your life easier. But you know what expectations that we have, you know, the expectation that, what, you know, our citizens have. So sometimes, you know, is, is, you make the right decision, not the popular decision. And, and I appreciate when you take the time to explain to me if I got a question, if I got a concern, or if I don't agree with you. I think it takes a lot of, uh, a lot of character to, if you have to, you, you have made a decision, but then you have a conversation with the board, and you understand that maybe you have to change your, uh, you understand in, 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 that, that, is the ability as a CEO is sometimes really hard, because you're responsible. But sometimes, when you, when you have that decision, you can be where this is my decision, and that's it. You always are willing to listen to us and listen to the public, and if something needs to be changed, you, you don't hesitate to say, hey, I was wrong. Well, I didn't solve this. We need to, for us to do, uh, do better, or to do right, or to do what is best, we need to change based on the decision, based on the information that I got today. And I made my decision, what information that I had yesterday. So it's, 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 it's really, uh, I've learned a lot, I've grown a lot as a person sitting next to you, so thank you.
I will say that I agree with, with everyone, all the statements that everyone has made. Um, and when COVID started and we was coming into this, um, you made a lot of different decisions, and you would make that decision based off the information that you had. We tried things, and if it didn't work out, we tried something different, all with the intention on trying to provide the best education for our students. And I just want to commend you for that, and just keep up the good work. Again, hopefully, come out of COVID, we can go into regular business. Um, but even going through this, you're still looking at what we can do in the future, what, what else can we do to become a better system? And I know that comes from the entire Madison City School staff. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Nichols, when we first sat down, bring the 2020 to look at, you know, applications or resumes for this position, and there were a lot of people who applied, a lot of qualified people who applied. Uh, you know, words I wrote down, apart from I go with the resumes, was executive-level leadership. That was the key to me, executive-level leadership. And you have consistently demonstrated that at a high level, that's assuming this role. Um, observations that I made in your evaluation, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll repeat them here, your, your, your strengths, I feel in no particular order, communication, leadership, decision-making, strategic planning. I think, you know, you're, you excel in all those, and that's, you know, what we needed in this role, and you provided it. Um, and as I said at a previous meeting, you willingly came into this job at a time when a lot of people wouldn't have wanted to do this, because it has not been easy. So I appreciate your passion for our students and our teachers and all of our staff that you show every day as you lead them. Um, I said it to you privately, and I'll say it here publicly, I believe you were the right person for this job at the right time. God put you here for a reason, and you've done an outstanding job, and I thank you for your service.
There's nothing further, then that'll conclude the evaluation from, uh, 2020 to 2021, and that segues very nicely into the, uh, your presentation of the goals for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, listed before you, and, uh, you have those, um, taken from the evaluation that each of you gave me. I looked at, um, several areas. Um, first of all, one, I know that we are in the process of developing a new five-year strategic plan for the school district, and so getting that accomplished this year, having those goals, and, uh, having that, we took a lot of feedback last year when we sent stakeholder surveys out, and, uh, we will meet next month for the first time with, uh, groups of people to look at that data and help us to draft that. And also to do a better job, I think, uh, in the past year, due to COVID, different things, uh, doing a better job of, of communicating, um, our department information, where we are. Uh, Dr. Ja and her staff have done a tremendous job of, of letting you know the changes that we've made, uh, in a challenging environment of recruiting, um, and retaining staff. And so, um, and then also, um, working with Dr. Scripture and Mr. Jones and, uh, Mr. Terrell as we look at implementing a better transportation, uh, routing system. Uh, we have that, um, program. We're ready to put it in place. Um, probably would have already had that done if, if the state had not changed the student data system to Power School. Uh, there's been a lot of issues with Power School. I, I was received emails today, and every time I get one of those, I send those to the state and, uh, to the Power School representative, but I'm sure they're getting them from 141 LEAs across the state, because it's not isolated to just Madison City. But we're going to get the, that the transportation system looked at. Uh, Dr. Scripture has been, uh, handling that. He can hang, his board knows here late before the start of school, and, um, just hiring drivers and getting those in place. Uh, but we've got to get that ready so that we also are ready for rolling out, uh, Journey next year, so that'll add an additional component. And then improving my own professional development, working in the community as well as, um, across the state and working with those organizations. So, um, I, I appreciate your feedback. Um, I'll wait till my comments to say anything else, but, um, I'm, I'm more than open to you providing any suggestions or ideas. Um, I, I did present Mr. Holcamp a list that had about 27 goals, because I feel the need to put one in each area that you're doing your evaluation each year, but he told me not to do that, but I still have them on a sheet of paper, and, um, and they will still be there to guide me through the year of, of, of things, uh, that we want to get accomplished.
Board, your feedback?
Dr. Nichols, I think these are, um, good goals that, that meet the direction of, of feedback you're giving. The only comment I would have is, I think, on number one, on, uh, the five-year strategic plan, I think is you, and I'm sure you've already thought about this in your mind, but as you have it, maybe to flesh that out a little more as far as the timeline, what you're hoping to accomplish, you know, at what points over that five years. Uh, I'd like to see that, but I think overall, I think it's very strong.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else?
So, on number two, personal management, I think when we went to the schools and we were talking to the students, and I think the most important part for them, it was, they needed somebody they can relate to. They needed somebody that, uh, that doesn't mean they looked like them, but they think like them. And, and I think having that number two- for them, it was they needed somebody they can relate to. They needed somebody that, that doesn't mean they looked like them, but they think like them. And I think having that number two, where you want to make sure we enhance the weight that we recruit so we can get, we already have the best. So I know you gotta, it's kind of hard how you get, you know, it's like Alabama, how you gotta go recruit better and better, better each year. So I'm glad that you will continue what we have done in the past, and you're going to enhance it. We're going to look for for the best in for all classes and students. Thank you.
All right. Nothing further. That'll conclude the superintendent goals for 2021 into 2022. And we'll move right into superintendent comments.
Mr. President, first of all, I want to recognize our SROs that are here tonight, Officer John Nunez that are with us, and we appreciate our SROs across the district. They do a tremendous job in the start of the school and working with our kids and helping helping our kids. And I appreciate, you know, just just next, this week, we have Chief Yandy coming to work with some of our EL community members that are new to our community to help work and make them feel a part of the community. And so I appreciate this partnership that we have with Madison Police Department and the work that they do. Also, we'd like to say, going back to the evaluation, that we have great teachers, and we have great administrators, and we have great cafeteria workers and paraprofessionals and bus drivers and and staff here at the central office. Dr. Clark, years ago, when it was over in the annex and it was starting the school district, what a great job he did to lay a foundation in the staff he had, and Dr. Fowler and Mr. Parker. I'm very honored to get to work with these folks. And so if there was something that came out good on my evaluation, then I assure you that it had more to do with Mr. Jones and Dr. Donaldson and Mr. Terrell and Ms. King than anything else. And if there's something that I need to work on that you've given me, then that's mine. I need to work on that. So we have a great team, and I'm honored to get to serve with them. And as Mr. Halsey said, I felt a year ago that this was a place that that the good Lord had me come, and I still feel that way. And it's been a challenging year. I think as you look across the state and as I talk to leaders across the state, there are a lot of there are a lot of openings across the state because of the challenges. You know, by and large, most folks get into school business, and we do that because we want to work with kids. And some teacher influenced our life and made us want to be a common educator, and we didn't get into it to to try to make anyone unhappy. It's part of leadership. You're going to make decisions, and sometimes you make them, as I've said in the past few weeks, the board makes. I'm sure the folks that are happy today will be unhappy somewhere in the future. I have folks that email me, and they want to be completely virtual already. And I'm like, no, we're not going to do that. If we can help it, we're going to stay in school. And we've been blessed so far that even though we've had positives and we've had folks in close contact, we've been able to sustain our staff. But I also want to say that our staffs helped to do that. We've had days in schools where librarians had to go in the classroom. We've had days when our transportation director had to be an aide on a bus. They did that because we want to stay in school. And around us, we're seeing that change, and we're going to work hard to do that. And, you know, I get I get the full gamut. And first of all, let me say thank you. I know some folks came back that came earlier, and I appreciate them coming and speaking. They may not agree with the decision that I've made, and I understand that, respect that for them. But at the same time, I'm going to make the one I think's best for the district. I'll make that in the future, whenever that is. And I'm sure that as we had before, we went to the mandate that I made for masks, we had folks who came and were unhappy about that. So, you know, for the most part, we just, we want to keep our kids in school, and we want to try to do that. So, and at the same time, I challenge our staff all the time. And nobody, I promise you, there's nobody that wants COVID to be over with more than the superintendent, or the other 140 superintendents that I talked to. We all do. But at the same time, we've got to keep focused on moving forward. We've got kids out there that that need better STEM and career tech options. We've got folks who we need to do, and Dr. Donaldson, and we're working on partnerships with our community colleges, our AIDT. We can't just spend all day focused on this at hand. We've got to continue to move forward and look at those programs and opportunities that will serve our kids and help us to continue to do what we want to do, and that is empower our kids. And so while we sometimes seem to spend all that time looking at that, we, I feel like my job is to force our folks out of that. They're glad to get out of it. But, you know, we just, we've got some opportunities for our kids. And some kids are going to go to four-year college. I took mine this week and dropped her off. And she is in that track to go off to college, four-year college and university. And but at the same time, there are kids who, there's a different path for them. And, you know, we need to do a better job of finding that pathway and opening those doors as well. You know, we talk about, I've kind of chastised our folks, we talk about a high student teacher ratio. Well, it's high, we can lower it. But it's high because of what we offer. It's high because of the AP classes. It's high because of the of the diverse language opportunities we offer. It's 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 high because we offer STEM and and things in the elementary school that other districts don't do that help our kids get a start that will move forward and be stronger as they come out the end. We could eliminate all of that, and we would look better on that chart. Our chart would look better compared to everybody else. But in the long run, we would not meet the needs. And so we, I say to Ms. Williams especially, because she and Jana, we're like on the teeter totter, you know, and everybody wants. And in that process, we're trying to keep that balance, because we also know at the same time, unlike other districts, we're going to expend $2 million that we would like to have used somewhere else because of student growth this year. So, you know, that's a good problem. When I came a year ago, I said, I will never complain. And I haven't, Mr. Terrell will tell you. I've never complained about us growing. Okay, it presents challenges. But it also presents opportunity. And so, you know, I look forward to that. I look forward to what we will look at in our five-year strategic plan. I look forward to developing and looking at new programs. Dr. Zinkle has joined us, and she has some incredible ideas about how we can do a better job for our students that have special needs, and how we can and can put those things in place. And as you all know, we don't get funded for that. We don't get funded for the fact that there are 86 different languages in our community. You know, people around this state think everybody speaks English in Madison. That's the only language they were ever born with. They don't know that 86 different languages are part of our community, and that we have people that move here from all over the world. And I think we got a whopping $100,000 to address EL last year. Maybe I'm off a little bit, not much. But, you know, the state, those funding things come local. And so I appreciate Ms. Williams, Ms. Gray, and our finance staff for helping to keep that balance. I liked her cartoon that we look fit, but we have a dog out front watching us. You know, it's kind of on guard, because we know that there's going to be challenges with adding the number of kids we have. With that said, we keep moving forward. We keep looking at our facilities. We keep looking at the programs that we offer and opportunities for our kids. We're not satisfied with those that we have today. But we are going to evaluate the ones we have to make sure if we started them 10 years ago, are they still doing what they said they would do today? Or can we find something better? So I look forward to continuing to do that. I appreciate working with each of you, and especially the team that's around me every day. I don't tell them thank you enough, I don't think, but I appreciate them. They're up early. They'll be up late tonight. We won't have school tomorrow. Again, do your own, you know, when the EMA tells you there could be pop-up tornado, where will you be on a bus? If there's 30 to 50 mile an hour winds, where will that affect? What will happen tonight? We never know. And so I guess when I, I always started making those decisions years ago as a superintendent, weather, back then, we thought the hardest decision you could ever make was weather. Weather's pretty nice. But I always felt like we need to make those decisions early. We might miss. My luck, it'll be beautiful and sunny all day tomorrow. But if it's not, and something tragic happens, I'll be the one standing there. If something tragic happens to a child in our district, I don't take that lightly. Been in this business a long time. And I just do the best that I can taking the information that I have. And right now, there's a lot of information. And then I make a decision. It might not always be popular. I respect anybody that disagrees with me, I do. But I make one that I believe in my heart is the one that's best for the district. And I appreciate the support I get from you. As Mr. Ferrer says, we have lots of conversations. And I appreciate that. And I get a lot of feedback from my team. I ask for their feedback. But the one team, one thing I always tell them is, if you give me that and I go with you, and it doesn't go the way that we wished, you'll never have to worry about me giving you credit. There's only one person who will take the credit when it's wrong, and that will be me. But if it goes right, I give it to you. And I appreciate Mr. Sanderson and Ms. Roberson and Mr. Pay. They give us a lot of good legal counsel and advice, and there's a lot of things that go on out there. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. And we will work to have a great year, and I'll work to improve on those things that we've outlined.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We'll move to board comments. Ms. Lesman, we'll start with you.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And for those of you with the public comments, we do, we do take those in and we we listen. Like Dr. Nichols said, one of the hardest parts of his job is having to make a decision, whether it's on weather or mask or dress code. Those are the hardest things to do. But as a leader, you do have to make a decision, and you have to move out, and you have to move forward. But we do listen, and thank you for your feedback. And on that, with the the dress code, I did look up while we were up here on the code of conduct for the students, and it didn't say anything about female. It just said student. So just want to make sure that that is being done for both male and female, correct? Okay. I wanted, oh, and thank you, Ms. Williams, for the budget presentation, the little pictures helped. And then I wanted to remind everyone that this Friday is the Madison Bowl at Madison City Stadium. So if you're ready, if you can come out, that'd be great to support. And I know Dr. Nichols comes out to a lot of the events that we have. Truly, we all have the children, the students' best interests in our hearts. I'll say, he, Dr. Nichols, thank you for coming out to the city board, Madison City Council meeting, where some of our students were recognized for the girl state, boy state. And also, he stopped by at the little cheer clinics on a Saturday. So if that's not dedication, and I know a lot of you guys do that as well, Mr. Terrell answers emails on the weekends. So we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Halsey?
Thank you again to the, our citizens who came out and speak tonight. I say it a lot, but I mean, it's good that we allow people to come speak, and I appreciate you guys feeling moved enough to come speak to us. So thank you for what you had to say. It is it is listened to and considered. Thank you for the budget presentation. Budgets are not exciting, but they're essential. So you put a lot of hard work into it. And we've got some more work to do. And so thank you for all the work on that. And I do want to echo a comment Ms. Lesman made about Dr. Nichols and his presence in our community and all of our school events. Some of you know, my father was a school superintendent. So I was aware of this, what he did, and I've seen Dr. Nichols do it, too. I can't tell you how many countless events our superintendents attend. You know, we think about the football games, that's the easy thing you see them at. But they're at plays, they're at cheer clinics, they're at chess matches, they're at coral presentations, our science clubs, everything you can imagine. Our leadership is there supporting our students. So I think you follow our executive leadership team who's always out there being visible in the community and making sure that our kids know that you're there for them and you support them. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Mr. Cummings?
I want to thank the finance team for presenting the budget. That's always a long process, going through all the numbers, but you guys do an outstanding job with doing that. Mr. Holcamp, you had mentioned the capital planning list and how some of that thing has been on the list for a long time. But it was great to know, the moment we got additional federal money and state money, we already had a job assigned to it and was able to take action on that. And we didn't have any problem spending that money with the projects. And I also want to thank, a special thank you to the city council and Councilman Denzine, our school liaison for representing, for recognizing the students of Bob Jones and James Clemens, who went to Boys and Girls State. I just give a special thank you for that. That was a major honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Mr. Ferrer?
I guess we pretty much have said everything that we needed to say today. Thank you for coming. Like always, or everything that we do in regards to COVID, everything that we do in regards to education, we take a lot of, a lot of effort in research. As you have said, this is fluid. There are some people are mad at us, but there might be some other people that will be mad at us when we have to make the right decision based on the information that we get. So we do listen, we take in consideration. I think one of the questions was, do we truly take this too seriously? I think you need on a, if not daily basis, correct, in with your schools, with your city officials, to get the right information to make the decisions that we have, based on, I think, there were some concerns about the clarity and the transparency in regards to the numbers you are, and how those, if you truly look at what, how many people we were quarantined based on the guidance of last year to compare to this year, is it fair to say there's a significant amount difference?
You know, we have that extra three feet we don't have to deal with. And, you know, in our classrooms, now you take that we have 12,000 students in 11 buildings. A neighboring school district could have 9,000 students in 17 buildings. So you go from 500 to 600 students in a building to 1,100 on the average in a building. And then in some of our areas, especially, you know, we have our middle schools, especially our high schools, those are, those are tight areas with a number of students, you know. You know, we go back to that, that chart that Ms. Williams had. We do have a high student teacher ratio in those regular classrooms. And we have that because we offer so many different varieties of things, you know. You go out in some neighboring systems, they wouldn't have two band directors, they wouldn't have extra folks in different areas that we have that are paid locally, that are not funded by the state. So yes, we would, we would have a significant amount more. Mr. Jones and Mr. Terrell look at that every day almost. And Bonnie Davis, our lead nurse, having that three feet, we wish, you know, it's, somebody asked me the other day, how could we, how could we get to a point where we didn't have to quarantine anybody? Well, we could. We have two options. We could spend, we don't have the facility, but if we had the rooms, we could spend millions of dollars to hire enough teachers to spread everybody out. Or we could do an AB rotation schedule. Well, nobody wants to do that. That's, that's not the best interest. So even though in some incidences, we have places So even though in some incidences, uh, we have places that are tight and we will still continue to get hit with these, uh, quarantining issues that, you know, um, because of that. We also have, I, I think about Midtown. We, we bought beautiful new furniture. We ordered this furniture, nobody thought about COVID. And so, you know, it has the latest and best tables and, and chairs that are different than the ones I went to that were angled and wooden and had a pencil holder at the top. They're, they're made for kids and they move and they, and they can be shifted in different ways. Those are great, except when you want to separate people. And then it, then it's hard to do that in some of those settings. So we have a large number of students. And so going back to that, um, you know, if, if we weren't doing what we're doing, we would have significantly more kids that were, um,
Quarantined.
Quarantined, uh, according to the guidance that we got. Now, I, I, I'm, you know me, I'm pretty straightforward. I, I, I fuss in, in a, in a, in a way with my ADPH folks. You know, if you read the CDC guidelines, if you're quarantined and you wait five days and go beyond, you can take a test. And if it's negative, you can come out of quarantine. Now, that's a CDC recommends that. Then they say in the next paragraph, but we leave it to the state. So each state is different and the, and the ADPH guidance is different. And so, um, you know, we're just trying to follow that. And I know that there's folks that say that's wrong and the other side says they're right. But as, as an agency over us in the state, um, they have that guidance. And, um, I, I don't necessarily agree with all of them. I, I can argue and I do. You can see Dr. Scott Harris, he will tell you that I, he probably gets more emails from me than any other superintendent. And, uh, you know, because I, 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 I challenge the thought down there on, on some of the requirements they have. But they're, but they're theirs to make and I don't, I don't have that data. But, um, you know, going back to your comment, you know, it, we, we work hard to try to, to keep as many kids in school as possible. Following the guidance that, that they've given them. And, uh, we're doing the best we can on them.
And unfortunately, we're the ones tagged with the decision. We might not be doctors, but it was delegated down to us and we got to make that decision based on the recommendations and what we got to do to make sure that our students are sitting in the classroom. It's like Mr. Halsey said, none of us like masks. I hate wearing a mask. But unfortunately, I have to. And with that said, in regards to, I believe we had a comment in regards to, to you send an email with a new policy. I believe what, what the policy is, is you just, it's a policy that was implemented last year. It's not a new policy. He just reemphasized what the policy was on the guidebook and the policy book that dictates what are the procedures, uh, in regards to, uh, dictates the policy of, of what happened if, just like every other, uh, code of conduct that we have in there. So just to reemphasize that for clarity. In regards to, and I know I'm, I'm going a little bit along. It's amazing to see how you, the, what, eighty-fifth school system, when it comes to, all our funding goes to, not only to fund, I think, seventy-six percent of our funds go to the classroom. It doesn't go to central office. It doesn't go to administrators. It, it goes to where it needs to be. It's unfortunately that twenty-plus of our funding is tied to infrastructure, which means there's a lot of opportunities for growth as a system. But that's the magic that we have. We are able to provide you better education in the same opportunities that Mountain Brook has with their budget being in Madison City Schools. And that's the magic. And it's not us. It's the people who work here. It's, it's the decisions and the recommendations that come all the way from the teacher, all the way to the superintendent that is communicating to us. And it's, it's amazing to see that. And I think that's, that's the most amazing thing. If you ever get to serve either in one of our committees or be part of anything that we do, that's the most amazing thing. You will learn the type of, the time and the resources that are, that are tied to every decision that we make as a, as a system. And with that said, I, I would like to, uh, invite you all, like Ms. Lesman said, to the Madison Bowl. I think, uh, is, is, it has become one of the biggest, is not the biggest event for, for the city. So hopefully I will see all of you there and that's all I got.
It's already been said, but I'd like to also thank, uh, Officers Jewell and Nunez for joining us tonight for all that you do. And, uh, and it was, it was said earlier, but, but the relationships that you build with our students, it's, it's very much appreciated. And, and we, we appreciate every bit of effort that you put into it. And, uh, and especially for a big, big game like this weekend, you are gonna, you are gonna be out there. And if it's like any other one, it's going to be a hundred and ten degrees and, 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 and I, I thank you ahead of time. Also, Ms. Denzing, thank you for coming again tonight. We're proud to have you as our city council liaison. For the, the parents of the, uh, the dress code issues and, uh, the emails that I've gotten about that and, and, uh, my own, uh, sixth grade son who, uh, is, is, uh, is using, using, uh, the earpiece in his, in his house. It has been, I've, I've served on policy for two or three years, two years, I believe, before I was on the, uh, before I was actually on the board. And it has probably been, it did not occur during that time, uh, the last time we looked at dress codes, which often are, require many lengthy discussions from many different points of view. But, uh, I would say it's probably been a decade since the dress code, uh, policy was written in its current form, unless I'm mistaken. I think that's probably the case. And, uh, and, and our, uh, our, our policy committee is, uh, is, is chaired by, uh, by Mr. Ferrer and, and Ms. Lesman. And, and I know that they will, uh, they will dive into that and they will look at that. And it's, and it's not just the policy, as many of the things in our district. It'll be the, it'll be working with, uh, with our leadership, Dr. Nichols and Mr. Terrell and, and making sure that that is, it is handled equitably across the district and, and across, across all individuals. And, uh, and, and Ms., and, and Dr. Ja will also be involved in that. And, uh, and so I just, I just challenge you to, to look at that with an open mind and make sure that, uh, that, that we, we, uh, we, we're not creating, creating any more problems and we're actually trying to solve problems. But, but something that's been set for about ten years probably needs to look at again. And, and so I just challenge, challenge you guys to do that. Board, I had sent out a list of, uh, dates for the rest of this term. And I got some feedback from a couple of you guys for Thursday, nine thirty, Thursday, ten fourteen, Tuesday, ten twenty-six, Tuesday, eleven nine, Thursday, eleven eighteen. And we will try to only have one meeting in the month of December, Thursday, twelve nine. Of course, we'll also be training that month together, uh, in, in Birmingham with ASB. If there is no issue that you guys know of with posting those dates, I would like to ask Ms. King to put those on the calendar so people can plan, uh, for the fall meetings. I appreciate that, board. And with that, we have a, uh, our, our second budget, our finance committee meeting September ninth at four PM. And that'll be followed with a, uh, school board meeting here in the board room at September ninth, five PM. And our second budget hearing will, will occur then. And if there's nothing further, board, take a motion and a second for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.